I've been through about four or five of these, but I still learn something new every time I go through it. And I also relearn something that I've forgotten from two or three sessions ago. So it's quite valuable. Some of you probably have gone through this maybe once or twice, but to give it your attention, you've been through it before with counsel. Basically, what we've done in the past is learn how to work with staff, working, interfacing with the public, interacting with each other, what's legal, what's to be avoided. Ex parte will be described, I'm sure, tonight. What to do when you're on a tour of a site and a hearing's coming up the next day. So commissioners ask questions, challenge our attorney. Quite frankly, we've had some opinions in the past by attorneys that have been overturned by the next attorney that is hired by the city, or changes that have been made by council policy. So feel free to challenge and to ask questions. With that, Steve, I guess we turn it over to you.
I'm sorry, I just thought of something. Can I interrupt? The other reason that we wanted to do this training this evening is that we know we have a new city attorney, Steve Kemp, and Lena McClellan is our assistant city attorney, and Brandon has still here around helping with the transition. I don't mean it like that, I'm sorry. Maybe because you haven't met, I mean, in fairness, Steve and Lena may not know everyone, so maybe we just do a round of introductions? Could we do that? Is that okay, Mr. Chair? And then really it is a general overview, and then we hope it to be more of a conversation and a discussion based on whatever questions that you do have. So it really is intended to get to know our new city attorney and Lena and Brandon, but also to just have the legal conversation. Is that all right? Did you introduce?
I will say the topic is not really meeting procedure. It's more overview of planning and property.
Well, yeah, legal perspective on planning. And then if we have questions about detail, procedure, how to make a motion, for example, those are all fair questions to ask.
One question before we give out names. Where's our microphones?
Our microphone is this new fancy thing up above, and so we do not need microphones.
Oh, has it been tried and tested?
It has. Yes, we've had it for about, well, I don't know, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. It's a council session.
It's not easy to pick up everybody's sidebar conversations too, though.
Well, it's just, it's a much more sophisticated system, and hopefully everyone is able to be heard on video as the intention.
Chew with your mouth closed.
I'm sorry.
Chew with your mouth closed.
Yes, Dennis started off.
Dennis Swain and I, planning staff.
Let's see, Dave Boldt, Commissioner.
Robyn Schwartzbacher, alternate one.
Andrea Lindon, planner.
Lynn Krueger, Commissioner.
Mark Riedke, Commissioner.
Bruce Stoll, Commissioner.
I'm Paul, City Clerk. You know me.
Yes, we do.
Jason Reynolds, alternate two.
I'm Denise, starting on the recording.
Brandon Dimon, Kissinger and Follman, outside of the city.
Lena McClellan, I'm the assistant city attorney.
And Steve Kemp, city attorney. And Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. This is something that we hope to do on a regular basis, which is to at least twice a year do a seminar on different law-related topics in terms of planning, development. This is the first one, so there may be some changes and switching around we'll want to make for the future. But it's one of the ways that I think is really important is to give you general information as a commission that allows you to be the most effective you can be. And so tonight, I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about basic issues in planning, how the system is structured, and some of the things that we use, as well as some of the process. And then I'm going to turn it over to Lena, who's going to address some of the very interesting issues in planning, like vested rights and takings. And then what we'd like to do is just go back and forth and answer questions. I think it's real important that we provide you with good, consistent legal advice where we have this kind of interaction, where we can talk back and forth and answer questions. It makes you more effective when you have cases, and it also gives you that background information as these cases come forward. And so with that, let's move on to the next slide. There are some different sources of authority in Colorado for a planning commission or a planning board. And I'm going to use the terms planning board or planning commission interchange. Some cities call them commissions, some cities call them boards, some call it planning and zoning commissions or planning and zoning boards. For purposes of this, I'm just going to use the term planning board, but you could use any of those terms for purposes of this discussion. No wonder the technology. In Colorado, like many states, Colorado has enacted a, what we call, the Zoning Act. And most states have done this, because most states have said there is no inherent power of local governments to zone. Local governments draw their zoning power from the state. And if you were to look at virtually almost all the states across the United States, California has a Zoning Act, Colorado has a Zoning Act, Arizona, where I practiced before, had a Zoning Act. Very few states do not have such an act. And if you were to look at them, you'd find that they're very, very similar. I've worked at both the Arizona and the Colorado Act in terms of preparing this presentation. And I can tell you in a lot of respects, they are very, very similar. And they both do the same thing, which is to set forth a series of guidelines and standards by which local governments can exercise their zoning and land use authority. Now, we also have the Colorado Sunshine, which is Colorado's open meetings law. This is what we call a public body, and it is subject to that law. And that means that when this commission acts, it must act in an open, public meeting. Its votes have to be recorded, and it can only act on things that are contained on its agenda. And even though many people say, well, it's an advisory board, it's still a public body for purposes of Colorado law. And we have our city charter. The city charter does actually have references to advisory boards, and it has some references to how the city conducts its business. And it's important to remember, planning and zoning, it's a legislative created authority. If we can't look at a piece of legislative authority or a statute, there is no what we call inherent or implied powers. And when the city, as a home rule city, the council exercises its power, the courts and the law have said many things are implied. The fact that the council has home rule, it doesn't have to specify that it can exercise its power. But zoning is different. There isn't this idea of implied or inherent powers. Rather, we have to look at some basis to draw our authority when we exercise that. We can move on to the next slide. Now, the boards in the city of Littleton are also governed by the city council's rules of legislative procedure. Unlike a lot of cities, this city has created its own legislative rules instead of using a document like Robert's Rules. There's actually some good things about that. If you've ever read Robert's Rules, it's a book about this thick. And if you ever, like, had in a case of insomnia, I have a couple extra copies, and I'll provide them to you. They were written for big legislative bodies or conventions. They weren't written for a small governmental body. And so there's a lot of things in there that really don't work very well for a body of seven or eight or 10 people. Now, under these legislative rules that the councils adopted, they apply both to the council and, as I mentioned, to the boards and commissions. And just like with the council, when you act, you will act by motion. Now, a lot of times, boards tend to get confused. This creates confusion in the record, and we'll talk about why that's a problem in a few minutes. Normally, you will have a presentation by staff, you'll have a presentation by the applicant, and you may have some follow-up questions for staff and the applicant. And then, after you close that hearing, the chairman of the commission will entertain a motion, and the commission will start discussion. I have had over my career a number of boards and commissions that will start discussion, and there's no motion on the floor, and then they vote. I'm sitting there going, wait, we had no motion, we have a vote. What was it that we approved? So I always advise chairmen of boards and commissions, before you start the commission portion of the discussion, entertain a motion, entertain a second, have the item on the floor. You can always amend a motion, but you don't want to take the risk of having all of this discussion, and then we don't have a motion on the floor. Or sometimes you'll have the discussion, have the motion at the end, and it creates a really disjointed record. And we'll get into again why the record's so important. Because the motion that is actually voted on has nothing to do with the record. So if I'm lawyer, if I'm a judge, I'm trying to look at and saying, okay, I have all this record from the commission. I have this motion that has nothing to do with the record. How can I really decide what the commission intended when the two don't connect? Now, we also have the Littleton Charter and Code, and they also govern how the Planning and Zoning Commission operates. We can move on to the next slide.
Steve, before you move on? I got a question I want to forward from many members of various boards and commissions I get. If I'm the one who brings the motion, am I wed to voting for that motion?
No. I mean, the mere fact that you're just, when we bring a motion, a motion's made, you're putting the item on the table for discussion. I have had over my career a number of officials who've made a motion, they've put it on the table for discussion, they've heard the discussion, and turned around and voted against their motion. It happens. You think of the motion as simply bringing up an item, it's putting it before the whole body for discussion. The same with the second. You second a motion, you're not wedded to voting on it. And I've had lots of seconds who turned around and voted against the motion that they seconded. Sometimes they'll even say, I'm seconding this motion to get it on the table for discussion, but I don't intend to vote on it. And that happens. And there's nothing wrong with it. That's part of the legislative process.
Why not put that motion in the negative then to...
The reason I really recommend against motions in the negative, again, it really confuses the record. And it doesn't really, say we have a motion to disapprove a zoning case. Okay, we get that motion, we second it, it's voted. Now, what happens to the zoning case? It's not resolved, we disapproved it, but it doesn't... Doing the motion in the negative really isn't the right way to do it. If the commission is going to act to disapprove a zoning case, it would be better for the commission to entertain a motion, move to reject case number blank, 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 based on the following reasons. And then that way, we know, if down the road, say we have a lawsuit, and the judge is looking at this, there is a discussion, there were these reasons, there was a motion for rejection, the commission acted, we have a nice, clean record. And why that becomes important is we'll talk about what it means to be a quasi-judicial body. And if the record, we have a motion in the negative, it's very difficult for courts to figure out what was it that the commission's doing. Yes?
Steve, I have a question. So if they have a motion that goes forward for approval, and it fails to pass, then it would, then a new, then no action is taken, so they have to come up with a new motion. Something needs to be resolved at the time of the meeting.
That's true. Again, what you'll have happen is, I've had cases, there'll be a motion to approve the zoning in case number blank, 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 fails on a three, four vote. Now, nothing's happened. The motion for approval has failed. The case is still there. And we don't know whether the case was rejected or the case was approved. What the proper procedure at that point would be for the chair to entertain another motion and determine if that motion would get sufficient votes for a majority. It creates a very difficult situation in the record. If we just have a motion for approval, it's rejected, and we have nothing else.
But our meetings, well, since I became chair, we don't do that second vote. Let's say if it's a vote against, we drop it and move on to whatever else we're doing.
Well, it wasn't a vote against, though, that's the thing. It wasn't, the motion to approve didn't pass. So then nothing passed. So you need to make a motion that does pass. You gotta leave the room with some pan.
If we haven't been doing that, we just let it slide.
Yes. You can have a motion to reject, it passes, case is rejected. Motion to approve, it passes, case is approved. Where it becomes a bit more difficult is when you have a motion, the motion fails. Because then the matter's not resolved. The motion failed, but the matter is still on the table.
What if the motion to reject fails? Then we've got a real problem.
Well, if the motion to reject fails, then the question is, is I expect someone will make a motion to approve and see if that motion to approve will pass.
No, I mean, it starts out with a motion to approve, it's rejected four, three, then we bring up a new motion to reject, that also fails, so we're out in no man's land.
You can do a motion to approve with the conditions.
Right, or a motion to continue.
Keep motioning until...
A motion to continue for more information, table the matter for further discussion.
And Mark, that happens all the time. We had that building board repeals a few weeks ago. We probably had six motions before we got to the right motion. So just doing it over and over again till you find the right mix.
Just when the motion comes up, we do amendments and get it to where we can take a reasonable vote, so.
And that would be the preferred way to have it happen, but sometimes it just doesn't. I've been in front of boards where we've had six, seven motions, because it just took that many to get a motion that the majority of the board could agree with. In an ideal world, it would get amended, but sometimes that just doesn't happen.
So moral of the story is don't let it dangle, I guess.
We don't want it to dangle. We need to have a resolution. Next slide. Now, zoning, there is a huge thing across the country in terms of how do we categorize zoning. In much of the eastern end of the United States, zoning has always been construed as quasi-judicial. In the western side of the United States, zoning has been traditionally viewed as legislative, including in Colorado for many years. However, in the 1970s and 80s, the Colorado courts moved away from that and said, no, we view zoning as a quasi-judicial. Now, why is that important? I'm going to take two states, Arizona and Colorado. Arizona, its courts have said zoning is legislative right up until the present. What that means is, there is no record. The zoning commission can consider anything. They can be lobbied by developers, they can be lobbied by lawyers, they can be lobbied by citizens. Anything is pretty much fair game. They need only have a rational basis, a reasonable reason for why they act. Now, in a quasi-judicial system, which is what Colorado is, you are basically operating from a record. You cannot have what we call ex-party conversations. For example, a zoning lawyer cannot call you up and say, well, I want to talk with you about this case because I want to see, answer all your questions, and try to convince you to vote. That's what we call an ex-party conversation. Only one party is there, and as a quasi-judicial body, you cannot do that. Rather, you operate from the record, which is the application, the staff review, any public comments that were submitted to the staff, the testimony at the public hearing, and any documents that were submitted pertaining to the matter. Now, why that becomes important is, is that if commissioners do have ex-party conversations, the decision of the board can be overturned because you essentially have engaged in improper conduct. So it's very important that you stick to the record. Occasionally, I've had cases in a quasi-judicial environment where suddenly the board wants to start considering things that are not in the record. And you're going to hear either Lena or Brandon or myself say, stop, you can only consider what's in the record. Yes?
So a lot of times, we're doing our work before a meeting, and it's a weekend. So if it's a regular day, you know, I call Jocelyn and ask a question if I have something about a code or a definition in the code that's not defined very well. What do I do after hours if I want to ask a question on code but obviously don't want to get caught in the ex-party?
Well, you can certainly, after hours, send an email, and obviously, as soon as the jury opens, we'll get the email. The key is, is that, A, you can't talk among yourselves, because that's really what we call a serial meeting, and you can create issues with the Sunshine Act. And B, if you have questions, sometimes we'll get situations where the commission will say, I have so many questions, we need to continue this. Perfectly fine to continue about it. There was a case called City of Monterey, California versus Del Monte News, which was continued for 13 years. The Supreme Court did say that they thought 13 years was too much. The developer tried to argue that, oh, one or two years was a due process violation, and the court said, no, we do think 13 years may have been pushing the envelope. So the answer is, is that don't go outside the record. And for whatever reason, there's information that you feel you need, that needs to be part of the record, work with Jocelyn and her staff to get that. But the trouble when you begin to go outside the record as a quasi-judicial body, then the question of impartiality becomes an issue. Because it suddenly becomes, well, you have that information, but you don't have that information, and where did you get it from? And suddenly, questions begin to arise about whether you really function in this quasi-judicial capacity. What quasi-judicial really means is, is think of yourself as a body of judges. And you're basically there, weighing all of the record, just like a judge does, in order to make a decision. And the same thing happens, I can tell you, I've litigated cases in both the federal and state courts. If a judge suddenly begins to pull things outside the record or a jury begins to pull things outside the record, then the case becomes subject to being overturned because that's due to specific conduct. So...
Let's say you have a, a case that's upcoming, they haven't made an official application for a rezoning, uh, but everybody and their uncle knows that it's coming up. A past policy has been, we could, we can talk to the public, we can talk to each other about the situation, the piece of property, but when the official application is made, then, X, shut up?
That's correct. Once, I mean, there's lots of possible things that might be out there. "Oh, this property may be rezoned." Until a case is filed, we have nothing before the city council with one caveat. Keep in mind that if you know there's a good possibility something could be the subject of official action and you start as a commission having discussions, you could create a violation of the sunshine law because you could get into a situation where even though there's no case filed, it's gonna be the subject of future official action. I certainly would tell you, if citizens talk to you, that's fine, but you want to be very cautious because you know it's coming, it could be coming before you. Uh, you can certainly say, "Well, that's interesting, I'm glad you let me know your concerns," or whatever. But I would be very, very cautious as a group discussing something even though it hadn't been filed because I think you create the risk of a sunshine law violation.
I don't think it'd be, it wouldn't be a group, it'd be an individual.
Yeah, and I mean, but I would tell you, in everywhere I've worked, uh, I've been in safe work and somebody will look and say, "Here's the city attorney, I want to tell you about this." Or, "I've had council members, uh, I was at the grocery store and I left behind me and there's one of my council members, and I'm sitting there going, 'Boy, seeing what I buy at a grocery store, isn't this interesting?'" And that happens, that's normal life, we all live that. And citizens will see you and they'll know you have a planning commission and they'll want to give you their two cents worth. That's fine if the case hasn't been filed, but keep in mind, if you start indicating that you've already developed a firm position on this case without hearing the evidence, again, that raises a question of your impartiality in a quasi judicial body.
Thank you. Good.
And, uh, so as I mentioned, Colorado is a quasi judicial state. Some other examples of western states that are quasi judicial, Washington, Oregon are quasi judicial states. Now, again, as I mentioned, Arizona. Arizona is a legislative state, and that makes a huge difference in how zoning cases get approached. Next slide. Now, are all planning matters quasi judicial? And the answer is, no, there are going to be some times when you actually wear a little bit of a different hat. For example, the zoning code provides for interpretations of the zoning code by the zoning administrator, who is Ms. Mills. Her opinions get to be reviewed. Now, there, she is acting as the head of an agency and you're acting as a reviewing body of an agency. So you're really acting much more in a legislative capacity versus a pure quasi judicial capacity. And what that means is, is that the standard becomes a bit different. You defer to the agency and the agency's opinion is upheld unless you can show it as being arbitrary, unreasonable, or capricious. And what does that mean? Arbitrary means that she failed to follow the rules. Just didn't follow the rules in the code. Unreasonable means that a reasonable person could not find a justification for the action. And then, capricious means it was decided without regards to the facts of the code. That simply, if you look at the code, look at the facts, there's no way you could come to that conclusion. And as I mentioned, the board is required to give deference to the administrative agency making the decision. That's an example of a, uh, more of a legislative decision. When you review preliminary plans, you're really acting in what we call an administrative capacity. The code is very specific on what a preliminary plan must include. If a preliminary plan has those things and it meets all the requirements of the code, you're generally, uh, required to let it move forward. You can't say, "Well, this plan meets all the requirements of the code, but it has too many marks, and so I'm not gonna approve it." If it meets the requirements of the code, it's an administrative act, and, uh, now, that doesn't mean that it gets approved because it has to go through final plan. And many times, preliminary plans will be reviewed by the staff and the staff will send back a whole series of red lines. They'll say, "Gee, your driveways are in the wrong place," or "Your utility specifications are not correct," or "You don't have proper setbacks." Those are all things that the staff does. But there's a series of things that when preliminary plans come before you, the staff will say, "Here's what the code requires, and yes, this preliminary plan meets all these requirements of the code." Another example is citing development plans when they are appealed. Again, they, you are acting much more in an administrative capacity versus a regular quasi judicial capacity. The issue for you at that point is, is are all the requirements of this code pertaining to citing development plans met? If they are, you can't say, "Well, I really hate this plan, it's just terrible. It meets every single requirement of the code, but I'm gonna vote against it because I just hate it." That, again, becomes a problem because you're acting really in an administrative review capacity. Most of what you do will be in a quasi judicial, but occasionally, you're in a different, you're wearing a different hat. Yes?
So, um, another one is if they're looking at code changes, do you want to talk about that? Like changes to the zoning code?
Yes, text amendments to the zoning code, you're actually acting as a legislative body. And there, you're acting in a totally different capacity as well. Because as a legislative body, your job is to bring your backgrounds, your skills, your knowledge, your ability, in considering all of the relevant information pertaining to that text amendment. Uh, we likely will have several text amendments coming to you this year. And you're gonna be looking at all of those and you're gonna be saying, "Hmm, as a reasonable person with my background and things, yeah, I think I might have a, no, I think this is a terrible idea." And so you'll be acting in that legislative capacity, which requires only a rational basis versus, uh, a quasi judicial or an administrative capacity.
So, Steve, is that why we're able to explain to them in study sessions what we're doing and it's not violating a quasi judicial piece right out of the legislative?
That's why I do study sessions on text amendments for that very reason. Because it's really providing you all of the background information so that you can make a legislative decision. Next slide.
And just on that note, speaking of the subdivision, right, that just came before you as an example, and not only did you review it in legislative, but you also came up with some ways to say it differently that made more sense. So those are also things that can be offered through that manner in legislative, right? So you can bring forward those ideas there in that setting.
And that's based on what you were saying, Steve, their expertise is background. Their background and they're allowed to do that, so.
And you're allowed to do that when you're acting in this legislative capacity. And so it's kind of difficult because occasionally, you'll be putting on this different hat, so to speak. And one of the things we would do as a staff is we will always, uh, do our best to make, you know, this is a text amendment, the commission will be looking at this from a legislative standpoint, or this is an administrative item. That's what you should expect from your staff, is us to tell you, "Okay, here's the ground rules, this is how you need to approach this." Now, there are some federal laws that impact planning and zoning as well. First is the Americans with Disabilities Act. And that was passed in nineteen ninety, it's been subsequently amended a number of times. Public entities must have a plan to provide disabled persons with access to all public meetings and facilities. Now, they are given an opportunity to take reasonable steps to accomplish this. But if you've been out walking around, I'm gonna tell you, you will see where we've been putting in curb cuts and you will see where we've been putting in the, uh, dark red, uh, bumps. And those are what part of ADA requires. So that we make quarters accessible to a person who is either disabled or perhaps, uh, blind, that they are able to know, "I'm at a quarter, I need to be prepared to cross the street." You will also see it, if you were to go upstairs in this building, we're doing a remodeling of human resources. One of the things you would notice is, one of the counters is lowered. It's designed for people who are in a wheelchair so that they are able to approach the counter and be able to interact with a person from behind the counter at that height. Those are all the types of things that the Americans with Disabilities Act, uh, requires. And, um, they also, uh, but they allow us to do that based on the circumstances. Now, not everywhere can be made accessible. Uh, we had a building, for example, in the last city I was in, that was built a hundred years ago. There was no way without taking the whole front of the building off that we could make it accessible from the front. We had to do a ramp from the back. That is one of those things that depending on the circumstances, sometimes that happens. Now, the Americans with Disabilities Act, uh, not just applies to governments, it also applies, and it's enforced by the federal government in terms of private, uh, facilities as well. Uh, for example, if you were to go into a relatively new retail establishment, you would notice in their restrooms that they always have at least one of the stalls designed for individuals who are disabled. Part of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Now, uh, again, it's based on the concept of reasonable accommodation. Then the next law, we can move on to the next slide, is, uh, the Federal Fair Housing Act in nineteen, uh, and there were amendments enacted in nineteen eighty-eight. This is a law that gets lots of cities in trouble. And I will give you the story of a city, the city of Yuma, Arizona. Had a zoning case coming for the city planning commission and the city council for what we call R16 zoning, six thousand square foot lots. It was objected to by all of the neighbors because small lots, these are gonna be small houses. And the neighbors were saying, quote, "The wrong type of people are going to be living in these houses." The city council allowed that to go on, and that was all the testimony in front of the city council. Whereupon the developer turned around and sued the city under the Federal Fair Housing Act, arguing that the city had engaged in discrimination based on both national origin and perception that, for example, uh, the development would be more Latino than Anglo. The city lost in district court, the city lost in the Ninth Circuit, the Supreme Court denied review, and the city is on the losing end of a six hundred seventy-five thousand dollar judgment. That is what can happen when, on the Federal Fair Housing Act, if there is a perception that a government or entity is engaging in improper conduct, discriminatory practices based on race, sex, national origin, disability, familiar status, and age. So let's talk about some of these. What does it mean when we talk about, we know race is pretty clear, sex is pretty clear, national origin is pretty clear, disability and familiar status. Uh, I've been involved with cities that have said, "Well, you know, we really don't like homes for folks with Alzheimer's, uh, that is a problem because those people may get out and wander around the neighborhood. And so we're just not going to agree that that home be located in the residential areas." That is a great way to get in a negotiation, and that's a great way, I'm sure Brandon will tell you that you're going to get sued and it's not going to be pleasant. Why? Because it violates this law. And the plaintiffs not only get their relief, they get their cost and attorney's fees. Familiar status, sometimes cities will have a zoning code where a family is, uh, five related people. You cannot treat family based on relationships. You have, you can certainly say a family is a set number, but you cannot treat familiar status based on relationships. And age, again, sometimes we will get, uh, you can have age restricted communities, but those are generally done by private deed restrictions. And they have to be limited to where, for example, uh, one of the two occupants of the residence has to be over fifty-five. So if, uh, I'm over fifty-five and my spouse is forty-five, but one of us has to be over fifty-five, one of us isn't over fifty-five, then the community can, through its deed restrictions, uh, not let you live there. But, cities generally cannot have age restricted zoning. It's done, the Federal Fair Housing Act does it through private deed restrictions. Now, another area that cities get in trouble are cities that prohibit homes for individuals with developmental disabilities. And these can be both adults with developmental disabilities or children with developmental disabilities. Most states have state laws that, uh, also prohibit discrimination against individuals with developmental disabilities. Now, developmental disabilities can be everything from individuals who have extremely low IQs to individuals who have physical disabilities, uh, and those all are protected under this law. And so it's important that we recognize this law is out there as we make zoning decisions. And we can't base zoning decisions on these discriminatory factors. And let's move on to the next one.
I was gonna add, whoa, yeah, go ahead. When I went to the FHA stuff, I mean, this is a super hot topic right now, and we'll cover a lot. And where you see this come up, a lot of times it's not necessarily like someone said, "We don't want this type of, um, nationality in our town," or whatever else. A lot of times restrictions on socioeconomic status and the type of housing, either rental versus ownership, it does disparately impact certain groups other than, um, it, it, it disparately impacts certain, um, race, ethnicity, gender groups more so than others. That combined with some of the public testimony can lead to a situation where you're yourself into an FHA problem. Um, where it was explicitly done on behalf of, um, restricting some sort of gender nationality, whether it's protected classes, but it disparately impacted them because you put a restriction on socioeconomic status or on the type of housing, rental versus ownership. So if these problems come up in, um, ways that are not maybe as explicit as what that slide says.
What do you say, uh, okay, Littleton has zoning districts that allow three thousand square foot lots, six thousand half acre, two acre lots.
Yes.
Uh, the fact that we, uh, we have different zone districts that allow it, I assume that's, we're legal? Or do all our half acre zone districts have to include six thousand square foot lots?
You can have a wide range of zoning districts, that's perfectly legal. Where the problem comes in is where, for example, you have a developer who seeks to rezon something to apartments, totally conforms to the city's general plan, totally conforms to the city's character plans for the area. Uh, it's totally compared, it's a lot of major arterial, meets all the circulation requirements, uh, it's been analyzed for water and wastewater, meets all those requirements. And it comes before you and you have a hundred citizens who come out and say, "Wow. You know, lower income people live in apartments. And, you know, this is just not the right place. We live over here and we live in single family homes and we don't want apartments, we don't want, uh, and some of those are gonna be federally subsidized, and we don't want any subsidized housing by us." Even though it meets the general plan, meets the character plans, meets all the utility requirements, meets everything, there's this perception, as Brandon just admitted to, about the wrong socioeconomic status.
But let's say it doesn't meet, uh, existing zoning. It meets the master plan, comprehensive plan, et cetera, but they're asking for a rezoning. Uh, we could reject it, not because of the reasons of, uh, we don't want poor people, this or that, or, or, uh, lower income people, but we say, "We, we want to keep it in that zoning district," and we'd reject it. That, to me, would be a reasonable rejection.
But keep in mind, you're a quasi judicial body and if everything else in the record indicates that this zoning request is in conformance, then as a quasi judicial body, the issue that comes up is, what's the basis for your rejection? Because the entire record supports granting the zoning request. And, uh, now, if you were in Arizona and you were in a legislative zoning state, yes, you could do that. But in a quasi judicial state, you have to come back to the record, you have to look at the whole record, you can only look at what's in the record, and you have to make your decision on that record. your decision on that record.
Your basis better be far outside of anything considering socioeconomic status and or any of those protected classes.
And you need to be able to track something in the record. I mean, you can certainly ask staff to do an analysis about whether it meets circulation requirements, how it affects open space, compatibility with existing development, all of those things.
Or near neighbors are 6,000-foot lots, and sorry, we don't want smaller ones, so that's three ways.
But you want things in the record.
Yeah.
That your basis can be rejected.
But beyond what you want, it has to be based on the comp plan and the facts and whether or not it meets the criteria in the code, not, "I don't want lots next to me that are smaller." You have to state statements that it's inconsistent with the comp plan, it doesn't meet this, it doesn't meet this design standard. You can't just say, "I don't want smaller lots next to me."
I mean, a lot of this stuff isn't, it appears that a lot of the stuff that does come in is PDO-related, and at which point in time, okay, there are broad comprehensive plan interpretations, and you can go, based on the evidence, you can make a reasonable interpretation, almost one way or the other a lot of times. But, so if somebody wanted to put PDO on a parcel that was CA, and they wanted to go dense apartment for the sake of an argument, there could still be a lot of arguments in the comprehensive plan that says, you know, "This isn't, this isn't consistent with these attributes of the comprehensive plan," while it is consistent with other attributes of the comprehensive plan. So, I mean, obviously, nobody's going to be overt enough to say, "Yeah, we're doing this because we don't want socioeconomic strength at this level."
You must be far, far enough to actually say that.
Yeah, right.
But no, the answer to your question is, when a developer wants what we call a planned development type of zoning, where they get to write their own standards, there, one of the things that happens is staff may well include a whole series of additional stipulations and requirements, because essentially that is almost a bargain for, we don't have full contract zoning, but it's kind of a bargain for zoning. You get the flexibility of planned development zoning, and the city says, "By the way, some of these things, we're going to add to your development standards because it's a planned development zone versus a traditional what we call a straight zone, like an R16, or an R13, or an R118, where it has a 3, 6, or 18,000 minimum square foot lot, and it's standard and there's no variations." You wanting to bargain for planned development zoning? Good. You have to negotiate those standards with the city. Can I get any negotiation? You have things you want, the city has things it wants. But the city and the developer cannot agree to do things that would put the city in violation of the Federal Fair Housing Act.
Steve, would you talk a little bit about the planning commission's role in the planned development overlay that they see? They're the one-stop shop for that. It doesn't go onto City Council, and that's, that the developer's requesting, that's to council members, board member Stalin's question about the PDOs.
I'll look at the PDOs and just think of what it is.
Okay.
The other federal law that also applies depending on zoning is...
Steve, I wanted to ask one question too, please. And this kind of dovetails a little bit with what Bruce was saying, when he was talking about, there's a lot of ambiguity in our, her, our design standards or neighborhood plans, you know? And in fact, we get a lot of conflicts. You know, if you look at our code, and you look at what it says, and you add on to, you know, the community character aspect, which comes in the neighborhood plans and that, they conflict. One says you can do this, but the other says, "Well, you actually can't do that because you have to look at all these things in mind." So aren't we supposed to, at this point, look at the most restrictive in that sense?
Well, when we look at a code, the way a court will interpret a code, is courts have what they call cannons of statutory construction, which is a very fancy legal term for rules on how you interpret a code. And what a court will try to do is give effect, and you as a quasi-traditional body should try to give effect to all of the code. And that means giving it, if you can do that by giving it a common sense interpretation to all of the provisions, you should do that. Now, sometimes you simply can't do that. They conflict, they don't work together. So then what a court says is, is you try to interpret them in such a way that you can give effect to both. And at the same time, you interpret them in such a way not to render any provision nonexistent or absurd. So it becomes a very difficult thing sometimes, because even as a lawyer, I will have to sit there and say, "Well, we have this code, and in one section, it says you can only do a use of B1 and B2. In another section, it says you can do all the uses of B1 and B2, but you can also do residential uses on that B1 and B2." Which is, well, you could interpret the code to say, "Okay, yes, you can do all the stuff in B1 and B2, but this other provision over here, which is specific, has grabbed these other provisions in." And that is how a court looks at trying to get effect to the entire code. Now, one of the things your staff and I are working on is, is you'll be seeing a number of text amendments, because we're aware that we have some things in our code that we need to work out. And over the next year, I think you're going to be very busy with text amendments, I suspect, Jonathan, and as we work out those things.
Hallelujah.
Amazing.
So trying to understand this a little better, when you're, you're looking at, you know, our different plans in our code, and so say it meets 80%, but it doesn't meet 20% of what it's saying, are you saying that when you give an effect, you should give it to the 80%, 80%?
No, what I'm saying is that if you have such an application that doesn't meet all the requirements of the code, you as a quasi-traditional body can reject that application. The way it becomes a lot more difficult is where you have an application that, if, depending on how you interpret the code, could meet all of the requirements of the code. Now, sometimes developers will submit, go figure, an application that doesn't meet certain requirements of the code. And I've had developers who were trying to just sort of beg the planning commission for approval, "Yeah, it doesn't really meet it, but can't you send it on, and we'll work it out at the council level?" No, if it doesn't meet the requirements of the code, that's part of the record, and you can simply say, "You haven't met the requirements of the code, you have to meet the requirements of the code."
But that goes back to our ambiguity, where people will interpretate the same sentence in totally opposite ways.
And when there's ambiguity, that's where you ask your staff, and you rely on your staff's interpretation of what they believe the code says. And yes.
Part of it is understanding that the code comes first.
Yeah.
Plans come second. It may be overriding of what's going on, but the code is what has to be met first and foremost. Plans benefit you after that.
The code is the form of a document, which will be there to base everything along with the city's general plan. Now, unlike some states in Colorado, the general plan is more of an aspirational document, but unless the city determines it to be otherwise. But the general plan and the code form the foundation for what you're doing. And then on top of that, you overlay the record, and those are the three tiers that form the basis for what you're doing. Now, another federal law that governs land use is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, commonly known as RLOPA. Now, a lot of folks have some misperceptions about RLOPA. I've had churches come in and say, "Well, we're a church under RLOPA, we get to do whatever we want." No, that's not what the law says. What the law says is, state local governments cannot excessively burden religious expression and land use in institutionalized persons' sayings. What does that mean? We had a city in Arizona that said, "Well, you cannot have any Bible studies at your house, because it puts too many cars on the street parking." And a person said, "I have a Bible study at six people every Tuesday." That probably, that type of code would get struck down under RLOPA. On the other hand, another person said, "Oh gee, I'm going to operate a church in my backyard and have 200 people show up every Sunday, and it's a residential area. Not zoned for a church, it doesn't have any of the building occupancy standards, I just want to practice my religion." That isn't, it says a beburdening religion by saying, "No, you can't do that." Usually, when cities get in trouble on RLOPA cases, it is that they've simply done something that goes so far to one point that it looks as an excessive burden, and you simply don't have a justification. It's, most normal land use, like I've had, for example, a church once argue, "Well, you can't make me put an fence along my property because that's prohibited by RLOPA." No, a fence is perfectly fine. I think my exact quote to the pastor was, you know, "Jesus said, 'Render unto Caesar that which belongs to Caesar, render unto God that which belongs to God,' and Caesar wants his house." That is not a burden on a church. And you get those types of things. On the other hand, if you begin to impose things that go too far, then you can end up in a RLOPA issue. And one of the major ones that I have dealt with has been churches doing, in synagogues and mosques, are doing feeding kitchens for the homeless, that they do as part of their ministry, and neighborhoods don't like the feeding kitchens. 500 homeless people show up on Sunday morning for pancakes and breakfast. And the church says, "Listen," or the synagogue or mosque, "this is part of our ministry, this is part of our exercising our religious beliefs." The city says, "No, it's not. You're operating a homeless shelter, it's not a church, it's not a religious-type institution. You can't do it." And that is the type of thing where you really begin to get into RLOPA conflicts. But, again, like recently, there's been a number of lawsuits by the feds over the location of mosques. There have been, and everyone is familiar, mosque is a facility used by persons of the Islamic faith for Friday prayers and worship. And a number of cities have said, "Well, we don't want a mosque in our city." That is guaranteed to give you a RLOPA suit. I can guarantee you, you will have to have a visit from the Department of Justice, and you will have a lawsuit. But on the other hand, there have been mosques that have said, "Well, we want to locate the middle of an industrial area," and the city has said, "Wait a second. We don't got synagogues going to industrial areas, we don't have churches going to industrial areas. Mosque, you can't be there." That's a different type of thing. And RLOPA even gets into the public employment context, because in institutionalized settings, if you look at parts of Europe, for example, they prohibit, in the Islamic faith, many women will wear what they call hijab, which is a scarf on their head. Many men who are Jewish will wear yarmulke. And some cities in Europe have said, "Well, you can't wear anything that expresses a religion." Under RLOPA, and even under our First Amendment, you would begin, you would run into serious problems trying to do that in the United States. Because, again, this act together with the First Amendment would raise those kinds of issues. That's why.
Okay, that's it.
Oh, so getting on to the planned development and the general plan, let's talk about those for just a couple of minutes. As I mentioned, in Colorado, unless the city determines otherwise, the general plan is what we call an aspirational document. It sets forth the basis for what the city's land use policies and philosophy are, but it doesn't act as a regulatory document. Now, some cities in Colorado have adopted regulatory general plans, and you, and the difference is, a regulatory general plan will actually have several elements. In Arizona, all of our plan, general plans, had to be regulatory, and they had 15 elements, everything from circulation to economic development to land use to a host of others. Here, our general plan is more of an aspirational document, but think of it as the basement. It's the foundation on which zoning is going to be based, which carries on the policies set forth in that general plan. We also have area plans or character plans. Character plans are more for a defined area, trying to preserve a specific character. Area plans, maybe among a quarter or one area, trying to address particular land use items in that area. Those are subsets of the general plan on which then zoning is placed on top. Now, when zoning first came out in the zoning legislation acts, which pretty much came across in most states in the 1940s, almost all zoning was what we call straight zoning. You had R18, 8,000 square foot lots, R13, 3,000 square foot lots, MR, multifamily residential, C1, C2, different types of commercial zones. And that was really the structure until the 1960s and 70s, when they began to develop a concept called planned development zoning. In Littleton, that's where we have our PDCs and PDRs, in some states they would call it PUDs, other states might call it PCDs, Planned Community Development. There's no magic to the acronyms. The idea is, is that instead of having a straight hard zoning standard where everything has to be the same, a developer could come into the city and negotiate the standards with the city. And what would determine the actual rules on how the property would develop would be the standards and guidelines that were adopted particular for that property. And normally, those would be incorporated like in a book, and you would have an entire book of standards and guidelines applicable to that property. It could cover everything from setbacks to road wets to even design criteria. And today, as you will see, a lot of the zoning in Littleton done with planned development zoning. And the key there is, is when you're acting as a board, you're really acting in a very, very broad capacity, because you're really looking at a set of customized zoning standards. The staff has worked with that developer, the staff has gone through, and again, all and out of reading the record before you. But just keep in mind that the planned development context is a much different context than straight zoning, which kind of gets us into some other, we were talking about some legal issues, and Mayna is going to address some of the more interesting legal issues, things such as vested rights and takings, both of which will have you right on the edge of the scene.
It was saying it's going to take her a minute to get it set up, so if anyone needs
Face. Just as a setup, some of these slides may have more detail than you really need, but I will try to keep it as 10,000 feet above as I can and not get too far into the legal talk. So the first thing that we're going to talk about is the takings clause. So what is the takings clause? So at its most basic, takings law is about the meaning and scope of private property rights. So it's about establishing that there is a protectable interest, that the government conduct is improperly affected that interest, and that the property owner is entitled to a remedy. So the takings clause comes from the Fifth Amendment. "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." And there is jurisprudence for days on what just compensation means, but that is where the takings clause comes from. So it bars the government from forcing some people alone to bear public burdens, which in all fairness should be borne by the public as a whole. So there are different categories of takings. So there's something known as direct condemnations or indirect. So this is where the government initiates the condemnation of land for the constructions of things like, for example, highways, reservoirs, or infrastructure. These are relatively straightforward and contain certain elements that, you know, you can recognize. For example, I own a piece of property that's in the proposed path of a new highway and the government exercises its power of eminent domain to bring a direct condemnation proceeding against me to take the property. So then what needs to be determined is how much I will be paid for this piece of property. So in this case, unquestionably, there's property that I own. The government is taking this property for a public use, i.e. the new highway, and the action by the government was an intentional act. So the next type is what we call indirect condemnation. So this occurs when the property owner is claiming that a regulation or other government action is a de facto taking that triggers this obligation to pay. So this is not as simple as a direct condemnation or eminent domain. For example, in this instance, say I purchased a piece of property that's zoned for high-density apartment buildings, but later the government rezones the area to allow only single-family residences. My lost expectation of potentially building an apartment complex is not necessarily a loss of property. So the government hasn't taken my physical property, but they have infringed on my intangible hope of using the property for some future use. So more specifically going into indirect condemnations, because like I mentioned, those eminent domain cases are a little bit more cut and dry. That's a very general statement. So in indirect condemnation, we have three types of claims generally. So physical takings, this is pretty easy to identify. Non-physical invasions, this occurs when a government regulation is so burdensome on a private property owner that it's tantamount to a direct appropriation or ouster. So essentially, you're taking all of the use. So some of the sort of seminal case law that we have is, that I'll go into more, a little bit more detail later, but there's a case, Lucas, the South Carolina Coastal Council, that is the full title of it. In this case, they talk about a regulation that completely deprives the landowner of all economically beneficial use of their property is known as a per se taking, subject to background principles, sort of like the owner's reasonable expectations of that use.
And if I remember that case correctly, it's someone that had each front property wanted to develop into condos or houses and they made an open space. So they had no ability to ever make money off that property again. So it's a taking at that point. They have no ability to gain any sort of economically return on that property.
The same property had to be re-sanded every year because of the wash away. It was an interesting property.
Yeah, there are some pictures now that you can see sort of a comparison between when that case first started and the property now, and there is clearly a lot of erosion, ocean erosion. So it's sort of interesting to see what's happened in the meantime, but yeah.
Dennis.
Is there any kind of standard in terms of what that minimum economic use is, or is that just case by case?
It's going to be a case by case determination by the court, but generally, we're depriving someone of any economic benefit. I mean, it's a regulatory taking.
It's just how much of one, one thing I'm not going to get into is the just compensation law because
That's a mess.
That's a mess.
But the Courts have looked at this, they've used this term, they call it reasonable investment back expectations. And they said in Lucas, they said, "Well, wait a second. Mr. Lucas, you're building right on the Atlantic Ocean. You know that there's hurricanes. You know that your house is going to end up in the ocean. Was it very reasonable for you to expect that you're going to get to then rezone this property to condos?" And so a lot of it will go to what were reasonable expectations of the owner when they purchased the property?
So I will say one thing, going back to the physical invasion, so that's going to be things like requiring the physical occupation of a part of private property. So for example, if you require the property owner to allow like the installation of cable televisions.
So I'll tell you about one that I'm currently dealing with, because I do a lot of utility work. And it's not a direct condemnation, but it was, someone put in fiber for their electric system that to run, basically to run the electric system, fiber communications between substations. Later, the use is added for broadband internet. Was that use envisioned in the original easement? No. So that then that fiber that's in the ground is a physical invasion of the property. It's, I mean, it's trespass at that point essentially and subject to a takings lawsuit.
So another case that's pretty seminal to taking jurisprudence is known as Penn Central. This created the framework for analyzing other types of takings claim. In that case, the court looked at the economic impact of the regulation on the property owner, the degree of interference with, we talked about those investment back expectations, and the character of the regulation itself.
So Lucas isn't the complete, like everyone agrees, you've taken away their ability economically to develop that property. Penn Station is a degree, it's not all the way, or you can still do something, right? You can still, you can build five-story condos, but not your 20-story condos originally envisioned. What is the damage there to the property or?
Right.
The court used that, this term in Penn Central, they said, "A regulation that goes too far." Now, they never really gave us what the too far is. But it's something that, what the court basically was saying, there is a point where you can go too far.
Call the, let's say, there's a junkyard on a really nice corner of the city and the city condemns or takes over the property in order to give it to a pet developer for something that will create more money or more sex for the city.
So that would
That's a different, that's a different type of takings issue, whether or not, and I think you have to turn to slide this, don't you, about whether or not you can do eminent domain for economic development purposes. And there's some case law on that, like it's really tricky, but it's something cities do have tired of.
Yeah, I will say one aspect of the eminent domain, the very, that sort of idea of direct condemnation is for public use.
Yeah, right.
So if you take a piece of property for a highway or, you know,
Light rail station.
Light rail station. Pretty clear that it's going to be public use. Where you start to get into problems is when you do something like, you know, that where you're taking it and giving it to private use. So like Brandon said, there's some case law about using it for economic growth that the courts have kind of tweaked around with, but I will say for eminent domain, there's that, definitely that aspect of public use.
Kelo versus New London, that did establish that economic development can be a use.
Yes.
It's just less black and white.
Right.
Right. A highway.
And like I said, I'm trying to keep this at the very like 10,000-foot view. If you would like us to get into the, you know, law school classroom, we can go a lot deeper. I just didn't think you guys wanted that.
Middleton and Newland and Mary, let's say.
So you've been talking about like individual pieces of property. What about if you look at like a whole neighborhood and suddenly you decide you want to put, I don't know, make it historical or something?
Again, what's going to happen is, it's for economic development. While the Supreme Court of the US has said economic development, a case called Kelo versus New Haven, Connecticut, is a public use, in many states, they have nailed that considerably. And so you're going to get into, okay, can we bring it with, because the key for formal eminent domain is it's got to be for a public use. So you've got to bring it within that definition. If you can't, then the argument becomes the city has no authority to condemn it. The city wants it. The city needs to just buy it. And the buying of a, there's a misperception out there. Condemnation is far cheaper than buying. It isn't, because you have to pay highest and best use for the property. And I can tell you essentially, as someone who's tried condemnation cases, in virtually every case, the city gets an appraisal, they do an appraisal, the property owner gets an appraisal, and their appraisal, the city's appraisal, both testify. And jurors basically simply go, "We don't understand appraisal methodology. Let's just forget the difference in the middle." And so it's really like an ownership.
But something like a historic district, that's not going to be a physical taking of property. That's a regulation that is potentially, could, something like that could have the potential to be a regulatory taking, but it's not going to be a physical.
So I guess the example would be that, all this is on a case by case basis, right? It's really hard to make broad generalizations as to, you know, they'll be, yes, it's definitely a taking. But if someone had to expect investment back expectation to build a high-rise, you know, and they had all the proper zoning to do it, and, you know, they had money down or anything else, there's plans drawn up, and all of a sudden, the city slaps on a historical designation onto the neighborhood and it limits you to building two-story buildings, right? Preserving everything else that is, but at most, you can build two stories of renovated existing properties. That would potentially be regulatory taking. And also, it probably would hinge on an invested right that we'll get to coming up.
So the final thing is what is known as a land use exaction. So this occurs when the government demands the dedication of private property for public use as a condition of granting a permit. So for example, sidewalk improvements, things like
Right-of-way dedication.
Right-of-way dedications. And this is sort of a discretionary determination where the government's going to condition future development on the exaction of this property. So sort of the comparison, so juxtapose this versus like impact fees. So impact fees are legislative created and they're generally applicable, one-time fees that are applied to all new development that will be served by the public improvements or services that are collected versus a specific exaction of a particular piece of property.
And you look at the three cases, Nolan, Nolan actually is a case in California. The property is owned by an assistant city attorney, the city in Los Angeles. And the California Coastal Commission said, "Oh, Mr. Nolan, we want an easement across your property to get to the Pacific Ocean, because everybody needs to get to the beach and lay on the beach." And Mr., and by the way, you don't get a building permit unless you give us the easement. Mr. Nolan, I mean, Mr. Martin, assistant city attorney, he was sued the state of California Coastal Commission and it went to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court said, "Yes, that's an exaction that goes too far. You can't just make somebody dedicate their property for a building permit." Now, had he perhaps been doing other things, the court might have ruled differently. And so you get that. Conversely, in the Nolan case, what the court did say is, the court said, "You know, no more exactions like rights of way and roadways. We don't see as problematic as demanding the owner of a hardware store give up land for a bicycle path." So there seems to be, if you look at these cases, if it's a typical exaction, the sidewalks, the roads, the courts give more deference to those than some of the more, less typical exactions like bicycle paths or easements to the beach. Same would be two easements up to a mountain.
What the court's looking for is what they call nexus between whatever the building permit is, you know, that they're applying for, or whatever exaction that they're taking. So I used to be, my first job at a law school was a Denver city attorney. I worked for Denver. We had a lot of cases about sidewalks. And generally, our analysis was if whatever the permit we were asking for impacted connectivity of the area, we had the power to get an exaction, to upgrade their sidewalk, to put it in a sidewalk, so on and so forth. But I mean, some sort of nexus, right? Some sort of connection between that building permit and whatever we were asking for.
Make one comment here. Bruce and I were just talking about it. When are we going to get away in this discussion from 10,000 feet to Fanny in a chair? What impacts the planning commission on a day-to-day basis? Are we going to get to that eventually tonight?
I think the answer to that question is, is that sometimes you will have developers come before you to argue, "Oh, well, what the staff is requiring is a takings." And quite honestly, when we do a planning case, your staff and the city attorney's office, we look at these issues and obviously, there may be some stipulations. You may wonder, "Why isn't that in there?" And it may be because we don't feel that there's a reasonable nexus between what we're asking for and the development. And that could expose the city to takings liability. Or sometimes you may suggest this stipulation and you're going to hear myself or Brandon or Mayna stand up and say, "We have concerns about a takings. This is what draws those concerns."
It's a fascinating discussion, but I also want to talk about nuts and bolts of everyday planning commissioner trudging into the meeting, how to prepare, how to handle the public.
Yes.
Will we be getting that, to that tonight, or?
We will be getting that in a subsequent session. We, that is definitely on the list. We are trying to sort of keep these in not more than a couple hours, because we recognize there's a point where everybody begins to get a little bit tired of that, but that is going to be on the subsequent mention.
Okay, so we'll stay with the 10,000-foot overview. Okay.
We'll say that, you know, even the short time I've been here, almost all these issues have come up in one application or another. It may not be as stark as some of the cases we're showing you, but we've had FHA issues for sure. We've had potential exaction issues for sure in cases as well. So these are all things that, you know, you're going to see at some point if you haven't already.
So we briefly touched on Lucas before. You said homeowner had a piece of beach from the property, wanted to build condos. Government said, "No." Well, there was a state regulation that prevented them from building those condos. And so this case really, like I said before, deals with situations where a government regulation deprives the landowner of all economically beneficial use of their property.
Was that a change after they bought the property, or did they buy the property knowing full well?
He lost the first house.
And actually, Lucas, there was a change after they bought it. They bought the property, there was a major hurricane, and then South Carolina said, wait a second, we can't have building here. Because, um, the property is gonna go right to the ocean. And the property owner was like, well, wait, you're taking me, all my property. And the issue before the court became, well, was it reasonable for you to expect that with the hurricane history? That you would be able to have unfettered building on this parcel? And this really becomes a very dependent fact issue. It is, every case turns on the unique facts to that property.
So I, so sort of put a point to that is, there's another case, um, where somebody wanted to build a club, private beach club on a portion of their property that had wetlands. And, um, it was subject to a regulation that they couldn't fill in the wetlands. And the owner claimed that by denying him the right to fill in, the permit to fill these wetlands, he was being denied all economically viable use of his property. However, the court found that there was evidence that there was a section of his property that he could have developed on. Um, and therefore, it didn't take all of economically beneficial use of his property. Because he still could build on, I think it was like an 18-acre parcel of his property. Um, so that's sort of the difference, right? In Lucas, you have, you can't do, you can't use any of it. In this other case, there was still part of his property that he could have used.
I guess, like, you know, talking nuts and bolts of everyday, where this comes into effect for your guys' life is you can't rezone something to open space where someone already has. There's a non-willing property owner, right? You can't deprive them of all economic use of their property. Trying to bring this back to what you guys do.
Bundle of sticks concept.
Correct.
Yes.
It's a bundle of sticks, you have a bundle of sticks. You give up some and you keep some.
Yeah, that's a common property law term is this bundle of sticks. So your prop, your rights as a private property owner are considered a bundle of sticks. And, you know, they're different rights sort of in that bundle.
Mineral rights and developer rights. I did 10 years in Oregon.
So we sort of briefly went over this case already. Um, this is where you don't have a total, um, deprivation of beneficial use. Um, so then the court, like I said, will look at this, um, sort of ad hoc factual inquiry that I talked about already. So, um, I'm bringing that back.
Where this gets down to the nuts and bolts is where, say, for example, the commission decided on a multifamily case. That the commission wanted 50% open space, and it wasn't going to consider, uh, any private property. It wasn't going to even consider any, uh, parking lot. It wasn't going to consider anything other than actual greenscape. Now, in essence, of the 50-acre parcel, 25% has to be actual, I don't know, 25 acres has to be actual greenscape. And it cannot be used for anything else. There's where a property owner's gonna say, well, wait a second, that goes too far. That, uh, and that's gonna become a fact, uh, decision for a court. Where a court, the property owner's argument will be, well, you should let me consider landscape easements, I can't build on those. So that's where we get into this analysis when a case comes before you. Did the city's regulations go too far?
But, in that context, you, you guys are gonna talk through this before we even see it.
Absolutely.
And you're gonna have some rationale for us to consider, right?
Oh, absolutely.
But it helps for you to have that background knowledge, so that when we come to you and say, we think that this suggested change to our code is takings. You don't go, what's a takings?
No, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I mean, you're not gonna get into, you guys are gonna consider what you're going through up here.
Yes.
And, and then what you're gonna do is give us a sense that here's the issue. Here's the layman's interpretation of your judgment of the issue. And then we're gonna have to look at those factual attributes and try to make a decision, you know, vis-à-vis what's being presented in a quasi-judicial area.
Absolutely, we would definitely, on any case, we look at these various things. Jocelyn staff in our office, we sit down and day in and day out, we look at these things. And, yeah, these issues get raised all the time. And we look at those and analyze cases in terms of these various issues before we present them to you or to the council.
Are, are there two potential outcomes here where, or is there just one? Where the courts decide there's a taking after we've decided something? Is, is one outcome, one outcome obviously is that you're paying the developer, or paying somebody money because you've taken their property or their economic use. Is, is another possibility that we have to allow the developer or owner to do whatever we told them we couldn't?
There could be a mouthful, I mean, one outcome could be that, yes, the regulation went too far, the developer sues. The developer seeks to have a court overturn the action. There may be a developer sues for money. Uh, many times, the governmental action is apparent. Uh, it's a tough burden on a developer to make the argument that a regulation went too far. Because courts do look to see if there's anything in the record that would support the governmental action. And so it could be any one of those three, or sometimes even a mixture. The court may say, well, you went too far here, but you were fine here. And so, uh, it's very much a fact dependent analysis.
Oh, we talked about these ones already. Wanna skip through this one?
I think the biggest issue here is, again, uh, that's just important for the commission to know. As many times developers will say, well, you can't make me do this as a takings. Well, courts have said, no, we look at the whole parcel. You can't sit here and say, well, because you're making me give up a D cell lane, uh, it's costing me money that's a takings. The court's gonna say, well, wait a second, let's look at the parcel as a whole. Now, if you're taking the whole parcel for a D cell lane, then maybe we have a takings. But the mere fact, you, you can't pick and choose, so to speak. I, I kind of view the parcel as a whole law as developer can't pick and choose. And that's the easy way to think about it, yes.
Now, hopefully and theoretically, by the time we get the proposal, those issues have been discussed.
Oh, absolutely, they've been discussed. And the developer certainly went over the staff position. And occasionally, developers will simply say, well, uh, I'm going to take my chances in front of the commission. And maybe try to somehow put information in the record for the commission that the commission might change its position. And do something different than what the staff recommendation is. But we, the staff extensively goes over this.
And usually write a confession memo, so we know it's an issue that's coming. We've written several of those this year, not to plan, commission with other boards, commissions in the council when these issues arise. Another place you need to look out for these things occurring is potential conditions of approval. So a condition of approval could create these issues that we had to work through then. That's probably, for your purposes, the place where you have to be most wary of creating some sort of, uh, takings, vested rights. Um, you know, impact on a federal regulatory scheme is these conditions of approval that, you know, the commission may wanna consider.
So the vested rights conversation is gonna bring it down probably more to a 2,500-foot view. This is something that you could actually see.
Quite frequently.
Quite frequently. Um, so Colorado recognizes two types of vested rights. Um, something known as common law vested rights. And Colorado also has a statutory vested rights act. Went to bar, sorry. Um, so, um, so the, so the background here is that cities and counties do have the power to do things like change zoning ordinances, make regulations. The power to revoke development permits that are issued in error. The issue arises when, um, as to whether landowners who begin developing or expending money in reliance on rules or permits. Should be able to complete their developments, um, if the rules change after, and whether they have to conform to these new rules. So a common law vested rights, um, is used by the courts to protect landowners, um, from the imposition of new or different regulations. After the landowner has reasonably and to their detriment relied in good faith on the government approval. And in this case, the landowner has to get a favorable ruling through the courts to get a determination of a common law vested right. Statutory vested rights, um, which should you wish to have some fun bedtime reading, can be found, um, in, at 2468 101 through 2468 106 of the CRS. Um, and that has a process that has to be followed, and approvals that must be obtained before a statutory vested right exists. But it's important to remember that these, uh, exist at the same time.
The laws in city code is a section on vested rights that basically gives developers a process, are you?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
And the important thing I need to keep in mind is developers will try to argue everything is a vested rights issue. Now, vested rights don't apply in areas like police, public. So the mere fact the city may change its rules for something that's public health and safety related. The city decides that, gee, uh, we need to have, uh, on major streets, a 18-inch sewer line instead of a 12-inch sewer line. That doesn't necessarily invoke a vested rights issue because it's not really attached to the rights to develop the land. It's more of a public health and safety, uh, type of change. So you will get developers who will try to say vested rights under the issue. And not everything is a vested right. And again, that's something that we as your staff would do that in the analysis.
So at common law, a right to use and develop property vests when the government gives approval for the development. Followed by the developers or the landowners reliance on that approval. So this is really, like I said, there's gonna be some stuff that's maybe above what you need to know. But basically, um, a vested right will exist if there's a representation, like I said, made by the government. The developer has to reasonably rely in good faith on that representation. And it has to be unjust to allow the government to, um, repudiate or modify that representation that they made. So the representation by the government can come in several forms. For example, a zoning decision, a subdivision plat approval, issuance of a building permit, or an oral statement by a representative of the government. With authority to bind the government, i.e. the planning director interpreting the zoning code. So the reliance has to be reasonable. The developer can't base this reliance on statements made by employees, for example, who lack authority. So, and it has to be good faith reliance. So if the developer used fraud to induce the government approval, then that's not gonna result in a vested right. So who has a common law vested right? Like I said, landowner or developer? This could be an individual, a partnership, or a corporation, for example. And, um, so in Colorado, the Supreme Court has held that neighbors and adjoining property owners do not have vested rights in the zoning of adjacent properties. So there was a case where the HOA challenged the rezoning of property in the neighborhood to permit, um, federal low-income housing. And the court, um, found that while the adjacent property owners had an interest in zoning changes that might diminish their enjoyment and use and value of their property. That did not constitute a vested right. So when do these rights vest? So that's gonna depend on the type of action that was taken and what the future government decisions are necessary for the project. Land use decisions that have been found to create a vested right, zoning, subdivision, uh, plats, site plans, building permits. Um, and actions that could trigger a rights claim, regulatory changes, pending ordinances, a denial of a permit. Um, or a local initiative or referendum or annexations.
So where this has come up, I guess, is when something has already got its zoning, they're in the site development process. Um, someone wants to put on a new regulation, they wanna revoke their site plan, even though they comply with all applicable standards. That's where you start worrying about these vested rights issues, and at that point, it's kind of too late. Um, the legislative action or the quasi-judicial, depending on what was done, has already been made. They've already relied upon investment back expectation to build the property. You can't kind of pull the rug out from under the developer. And so that's where we've run into these types of issues in the past.
So, a good, can we follow up and talk about, cause I know this question has come up when we brought forward new code amendments to the zoning code. And you have projects in process. So I think that's what you're trying to say.
That's where it's tricky, is at what point has it, has it turned into a vested right? And I mean, really, we're looking for something like a building, building permit is already been pulled, they got a building permit, probably can't, um, you know, do something that would make them not be able to act on that building permit. They were, it's already been approved, an SDP approval, probably similar type of, um, you know, it's a, it's always a question, where is that line being crossed? And there's court cases all over the place. The way to think about court cases are kind of like a scatter plot, right? There's dots all over the map about, you know, this is considered crossing the line. And we're kind of looking, as attorneys are looking at, where's that, that line in the middle of the median in the scatter plot? That should be trying to go off as like, that's probably the line. So it's hard to say always, but usually something like a building permit, an SDP, um, there, the building is in the, is already being constructed. There, there are boots on the ground and they're, you know, creating the building. They probably have a vested right at that point, but it'd be really for our purposes, um, SDP or, uh, building permit is usually a pretty clear indicator that they have a vested right.
Probably a vested right, yeah. Maybe this is later, but also like, like on the takings, that's the other question, right? That has come up when we're doing code updates, let's say to B2 or whatever, CA, we make a change. At what point, you know what I mean? If it's, if it's, generally, I think what we've talked about is if you're doing it district-wide, then that's fine, cause it's gonna impact everyone. But you can just speak to that, cause I know that has been a conversation we've had.
So you should kind of start in spot zoning almost, where it's like one prop, we're gonna rezone this one property to either allow a use or to prevent a use. You can't, you, you can't do individual, um, either take away or to give someone anything special, right? It may not be a taking, but maybe a spot zoning, um, problem.
Right.
Just another type of, another type of issue, but it's in a similar vein.
And I, I will, I will say in the case that I did not go over, the one that was the whole parcel one, that's a very recent Supreme Court case. And in that case, they, um, the court had an issue with the fact that these people tried to merge their property, their lots, after this regulation was already in place. And so that's a pretty clear line, right? Like if you buy that property knowing that you can't do what you wanna do, and then the government tells you, you can't do what you wanna do with that piece of property. That's not, like, that's gonna be pretty cut and dry, you know?
And so about like the zoning code issue, uh, that gives a much more difficult argument for a developer to argue vested rights. Because the court, as Brandon said, it's applied across the whole board, it's attached, it's attaching to all property. And, uh, you may occasionally get a non-conforming use issue, but it's very difficult in those situations for the developer to argue vested rights. Where the vested rights really comes in is we have XYZ development. XYZ development is multifamily, it's highly described by a lot of people. And so the city council suddenly says, well, even though you have your building permits and everything else. We're now going to impose a new regulation that will prevent you from, uh, building parking lots sufficient to meet your residential demand. That is your classic vested rights case.
Or rezone it so you couldn't do that high of density.
Yeah.
You know, they already have their SDP or building permits, or something of that nature is where you went into it.
What if they're not that far along? What if they just have an application? And at the time that they turn in the application, there was a certain.
There's been a lot of litigation about what is detrimental reliance. Um, and they look a lot at, uh, how much money the developer has expended on the project. Um, so there's no, as with many things in the law, there's no black and white answer.
Yeah, with pointing a grandfathered in to where you can.
Usually, you already have your zoning approval, and you have an SDP, or you have a building permit. Usually, if you just have an application and that's not, if I deny your application, that's not a vested right. Or you haven't done anything yet to hit grand, we'll call it grandfathering, it's different terminology. To grandfather that right in, usually just an application by itself is not a trigger of vested rights issue. It's, you already have other governmental approvals, other money spent, um, that make that vested right. You already have other governmental approvals, other money spent that make that vested right become right.
So in Colorado, we have statutory vested rights as well as common law vested rights. This was adopted by the Colorado State Legislature in 1987. It applies to both statutory and home rule of government. So it applies to the city of Littleton as well. And it has not yet been litigated as to whether or not this overstepped those bounds. So at this point, we operate under the assumption that we must follow the Statutory Vested Rights Act. It defines, a statutory vested right is defined as a right to undertake and complete the development and use of property under the terms and conditions of a site-specific development plan. So the act itself indicates that the governments are supposed to define what that means, or it defaults to state, to the statute language. So once the statutory vested right is established based on what's required in this statute, the local government is precluded from taking any zoning or land use action that would alter, impair, prevent, diminish, impose a moratorium on development, or otherwise delay a development or use of the property in any way except as set forth in a site-specific And then there is a term of three years from the date of approval for a statutory vested right. So. Anything else statutory vested rights?
Maybe a parenthetical question, it just sort of popped in. But this is something that's come up in the past, and the attorneys at the time explained it one way, and I guess what I want to do is see if you guys feel the same. But at one point, there was discussion about potentially putting time limits on a rezoning. So in other words, you have to do something on a PDO or a rezone within a stipulated period of time, else it reverts to the prior zone. You just said three years, which is the, you were talking about vested rights, but the three years is what triggered the thought. The way it was described was, you can't really do that, because essentially, if you've rezoned a parcel, or you've agreed to a PDO, if you revoke it at a certain point in time, even if they haven't done anything, it constitutes a taking. Is that your guys' interpretation?
I would say zoning is not time limited. So zoning is zoning, is the zoning, unless you change it. So once you've approved that, there, it's not a ticking clock.
Okay, but what if you approve it with the stipulation that you have to do something within three years?
So the answer there is reversion generally in most states, including Colorado, first it's disfavored, because it's viewed, it's disfavored because it's viewed as taking, in essence, and pinching on a property right. Now, some states had, for example, clauses where they tried to provide for automatic reversion of zoning. I think that clearly violates the Fifth Amendment. I think it clearly violates the Colorado Constitution. I think if the city was saying it absolutely wanted to do that, I think under the zoning and APN Act, you would actually have to initiate a rezoning back to the old rezoning. You'd have to go through the whole zoning process, through the whole quasi judicial record, and you would have some risk of a vested rights issue.
And it becomes a cost issue, right? Versus how they're dating for to say, why, you shouldn't revert it back. So if you're going to do it, and because common law is pretty clear, it does not like this concept, you took a lot of very clear regulations on how it's going to be done.
Yeah. Because once you have that zoning, I mean, as the property owner, one of your private, one of your rights as a property owner is you can do whatever you want that's within, you know, the allowable use of that property. If that means that you could build apartments, but you choose never to do so, as a private property owner, that's your right.
But I was wondering if it wasn't just a, and I understand what you guys are saying, but I mean, conditional upon it occurring within a period of time, because that's what ends up happening is, you rezone a parcel, and then somebody just sits on it.
But I think that goes back to what I'm just saying, right? As the property owner, you have every right to do or not to do those things on your property.
Commissioner Bol.
So we went to a conference in Stevo, Bruce is talking about specifically zoning. But there are other ways to do that, where you give a developer a certain amount of time to develop a property, or they can't do it anymore. Stevo gave us several examples where they've pointed out specific properties where the developer didn't complete a project, or didn't even start a project, and then they're...
That's probably more like they're approving or they're developing.
Well, I think the difference here, right, is from, you're talking about, like, rezoning is one thing. And then the vested right, the three years, so if you do a site development plan, you submit it, you get a specific, specific site plan of how you're going to build whatever that zoning use is. That is your three years. If you don't do that particular plan in three years, then yes, then that expires.
Building permits expire. If you don't put a building permit on the site plan within a certain period of time, it expires. But that's very different than your zoning property.
Let's say you have a rezoning, okay? It's a rezoning issue. Planning Commission isn't asking for it, the city's not asking for it, the developer's asking for it. He comes crawling in, asking for a rezoning. Can't we put a stipulation in of a time period?
I would not do that.
It's highly disfavored in our Colorado law.
He's the one asking for it.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter what, turn him down, turn him down all he has to do.
You have to just, just answer, turn him down.
Yeah, it's a fair question.
Yeah, I guess my question or response to that is, wouldn't the city have to make a finding that it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan in order to approve the zoning in the first place? So if the city says, we like this zoning, it complies with our plan, we should allow it to happen, what's the point of putting a time limit on it?
But if you look at our comprehensive plan, it's so nebulous that it's not specific for any street corner or area, it's really general. So you can't hang your hat on our comprehensive plan, the way it's written so far.
So the city of Littleton actually has a vested rights section in our city code, which was passed afterwards and in response to the Statutory Vested Rights Act. It can be found in Title 10, Chapter 13. The purpose, as laid out in the code, is to provide the necessary procedures to implement the vested right, property rights statute. It places certain conditions on the vesting of property rights, saying that the failure to abide by these terms and conditions, or in the vesting plan approved pursuant to the code, will result in forfeiture of any property rights which may have been vested under the code. Talked about eligibility and application. But one thing to remember, the same as with the Statutory Vested Rights Act, is that this does not preclude the potential for a claim of common law vested rights. So just remember, the common law vested rights is always lurking above you. And even if it's not necessarily violating the Statutory Vested Rights Act or the Littleton City Code, you still have this common law vested rights issue sort of floating around in the background.
What might be an example of failure to abide against forfeiting a vested right?
So the Littleton Code is very specific on what you have to do to get a statutory vested right. And it's been a while since I've looked at it, as I can't tell exactly what those steps are. But so you have to make an application, a planning commission, I think is one of the things you have to do. And so if you don't, according to Littleton Code, if you don't apply to the planning commission and ask for a vested right, you don't have a statutory vested right.
But you could still...
You could still have a common law one. And because this stuff has never been litigated, we don't know if the state laws would actually supersede or uncharter on that point.
Yeah. I will say, there's some very strongly worded language in the Littleton City Code in reference to the state statute, and how whoever the council was at the time that this was passed had very strong feelings about the fact that the state had overstepped its bounds in passing this law. But because it's never been litigated in court, we don't actually know if the court would find that the Colorado Statutory Vested Right Act actually infringed on our home rule authority or not. So no one, no one has taken it upon themselves to test that theory.
And usually, you usually have a common law vested right before you get into this role. But it's another option available to developer, if they would like to ask for a statutory vested right, they have the ability under our code to submit what's called a vesting plan, that would give them, you know, on a paper document, that I have a vested right, as long as they meet the eligibility requirement. Have many developers gone that route?
I don't think, yeah. I don't know if they have any examples.
It's very common in other jurisdictions.
I would guess that most developers, like Brandon said, before you ever get to a statutory vested right, you likely have already proven the elements for a common law vested right. And so, you know, most developers probably don't, maybe don't see the need to go through that process, because they are hanging their hats on the fact that they would be able to prove a common law vested right long before they would need to jump into this.
From a practical standpoint for the developer, too, it becomes very difficult, because if the city requires a vesting schedule or a vesting plan, the city may require a lot of engineering and a lot of expense upfront that a developer might not normally incur until after the site development plan. And so from a developer's standpoint, this cuts both ways. And so a lot of developers would say, I'd rather do a planned development type of zoning, planned among the overlay, and take my chances, because I don't want to make these huge investments And so with that, we have covered all of the issues that we have planned for tonight. So really, if you have questions, we're happy to answer any questions. But that covers the things that we had planned for this. We are going to have another one of these planned, probably right around the end of the year, maybe the first of next year, where we'll pick up on some other issues. And also, any updates in terms of things that have changed or whatever. But it's been a great pleasure to be able to do this. I'm very, very pleased and look forward to having the opportunity to do this more in the future.
Any questions?
Anthony, the only thing I would offer, if the commission would like sooner, kind of next step, if you will, to talk about some of the stuff that Steve is alluding to earlier, about if you want more, you know what I mean? We can, we can do something at your pleasure if you're, or we can talk about specifically questions you have tonight, too. I mean, we don't have to stop the conversation right now, or, you know what I mean? Just, I don't know.
Oh, absolutely, no.
Just say, make sure if you've got questions, ask them.
I know it's getting later in the evening, but we can...
So if I already want to manage that, we can do that.
I'd prefer sooner. I mean, I know a lot of these guys have been on the board for a while, but I'm new. And I was really looking forward to what we were talking, you know, what they were mentioning, the nuts and bolts of being a planning commissioner. To me, that's really important at this point, to make sure that I'm doing my job properly. So personally, I'd rather have something way sooner than that.
But then we would definitely put something together that focuses on that very thing. So the nuts and bolts of being a planning commissioner, and what that involves, as well as sometimes is a question of, well, how does this all fit together? We have staff, we have the planning commission, we have the council, and we'll, I think, integrate that as part of this, too. How do the pieces fit together?
We'll give you one example of a nut and bolt. It's not, it's a minor item, but it is somewhat important. Let's say there's been official application made, and you get an email from a citizen arguing for or against, what do you do as a planning commissioner? Those kind of things, you come up with three or four dozen of those things. I don't want to answer it tonight, but that would be a nice follow-up meeting.
Yeah, we will build that into, so a frequently asked question for planning commissioners, just like on your computer, the FAQs, we'll have a whole series of FAQs for you that you can, and if you have any FAQs for us that you want answered, send them to Jocelyn. And Jocelyn, thank you for volunteering, Jocelyn, the compiler will listen to them. Now she's surprised. But if you send them to Jocelyn, we'll work with her, and we will be putting something together on those FAQs, the nuts and bolts of being a planning commissioner, and how does this all fit together?
Besides that, I have two questions on quasi judicial, if that's okay for now?
Sure.
So when we are asking questions, you know, during the hearing, you know, we're asking questions to the staff, or we're asking questions to the applicant, and Mark goes up and says, technical questions, I've been told different things about what technical means that are actually dynamically opposed. So I'd like just to have an explanation of what exactly is a technical question.
When the commission is looking at this, you're going to really be looking at things from the code and record. Now, occasionally, I've had planning commissioners who will ask, well, I think the parking spaces should be 12 feet wide instead of 10 feet wide. That really is getting to a technical issue, because that's essentially set forth by an engineering standard. We're going to apply our engineering standards to the site plan, and we will analyze it there. And where I would, I've actually had planning commissions want to engineer roadways and parking lots. I would say this one word, but that is where you really get into technical questions are really a staff responsibility versus the planning commission's responsibility, which is to look at the things in the code, the general plan, the record, the character plans and the area plans, and the information you're taking from the public hearing and documents.
Commissioner Shorst, you're talking about when, you know, staff's completed their presentation, Mark asks, are there any technical questions for staff? At that point, is it appropriate to ask any question that was within the four corners of the application of staff?
I think that's what I thought, but I wanted clarification, just some clarification. And also, when we're asking technical questions of staff, you know, I'm, a lot of times I'm looking for like a code verification or an explanation from the staff's point of view. And it might be something in one of the plans, you know? I'll just use an example, like the PDO, you know, we have a PDO, the flexibility is, you know, that has to benefit the city, whatever the developer's doing. So I might ask the staff, and I mentioned this to Jocelyn, about what are the benefits to the city? And then that will get passed on to the applicant. And that confuses me, because I'm really looking for what the city sees as the benefits, which may be the same, but may be different.
And I think that's a very good question. First, ask the city, hey, staff, why do you think this is a benefit to the city? And the staff can respond to that. Now, the applicant may well want to respond and try to give you their position why it's a benefit to the city, but both of those responses are things that you can consider. And the staff can answer from its perspective, as well as the applicant answering that from their perspective. And then as a body, you're going to take all of that testimony and weigh it in the credibility and the information against what you have in making your decision.
And maybe this goes more to Jocelyn about, when is it that, you know, sometimes you'll pass it, say, well, ask the developer? When I think I'm asking something very specific about a code or a plan, but I'm looking from staff's perspective, and then, you know, you or one of the staff will say, I'll let the developer answer that. And we talked a little bit about this, but could you explain that a little bit more, please?
Maybe not, really, maybe I'm not understanding your question, so maybe if I'm not at that moment, I'm not sure. If it's a question about, oh, well, you know, we understand that maybe they want to do something with the units, and what's their plan for, you know, development, and when they want to start building? Staff's not going to be able to answer like a question that's really about the developer. So in those cases, we will ask the developer.
This is more like code specific, and I'm trying to, again, I just use the PDO because this has happened, where I asked, what did the, what were the, and I don't remember who, and that doesn't even matter, but what are the benefits to the city? And I was told to ask the developer. And I thought that was a specific part of the code that the city would have already figured out, because that's part of the code.
Absolutely, because that was the application in front of you, that even. So if you're asking me something that you specifically asked me, then I can talk with you. I don't recall, but if there's ever a way where you're not thinking staff is understanding what is asked of them, then maybe, you know, make sure to ask them again, is the only thing I can say. The intention isn't for us to not answer what we have done. We've done the analysis, so if you have a question about the code and staff's analysis, then that, we should be able to provide that answer. then that, we should be able to provide that answer. That also is the communication and what we tend to do in writing, right, to review all of our analysis based on the code provisions.
So that is just a communication at that point. So maybe restate it if it seems like what I'm asking is specific to what you've analyzed and is in the staff notes, because that's what I'm trying to ask, but maybe that isn't sound proper.
Yes. Okay. So I think, just for some clarification, some of our analysis is in the code, and it's in the staff report. So maybe that's when you ask that question, we're like, what was in the staff report? What exactly do you mean? Because our full analysis of what the, I don't even, you know, if it's a higher level of design or whatever, it's outlined in the staff report with all those criteria. So that's how we're seeing it. So maybe that's where some of the confusion is coming in, because we don't have a specific one thing, like, this is super awesome, and let's go ahead and do it. We're not going to give you that answer. Our thing is, we're, you know, warriors of the code, all we do is, you know, process in the code. So our analysis will be the full write-up of the staff report for that.
It's usually a clarification of it, or it's something specific that I thought was not included in the staff analysis for what the code was asking. So, but I hear communication.
Well, I think part of what I'm hearing in this is that there are specific requirements in the code that say the city needs to benefit from this. It needs to go above and beyond the basic subdivision or above and beyond the project. There has to be an exchange or a negotiation.
We're talking about PDOs.
PDOs and planned development.
Right. But what we're not hearing at these meetings is what, how this benefits the city. In other words, we're getting the negotiated piece from the developer, what he's getting out of it.
But what I'm also seeing here is I don't see anywhere in the PDO section that says benefit to the city. It may be in another section of the code, but in chapter nine specifically, PDO, it says higher level of design.
I'll get to it. But it does say that. That's only because I found it specifically, and I'm sorry, I didn't write it down in my notes, I had it in my other note, but it is, it specifically does say that. Not necessarily where you are, but farther into it, I can get that for you, but I apologize.
Well, you know, one thing, and I didn't necessarily want to, we haven't worked through it, but one thing we're also doing, so I was thinking in my head, like, when do we want to reschedule another discussion? One thing we're also doing with Steve is working through staff communications and how those are structured, and we do want to make some changes to that. So there is some of that that we will bring to you before we just all of a sudden one day you get it back and you're like, oh, my God, what is this? We'll definitely work through that ahead of time, but that's another thing that we're taking on, again, to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do, providing with that full analysis. So, I mean, that might also help to pull from your place.
And a good example, something like a higher level of design, that is something that we consider, okay. Well, then we'll make sure the attachments or whatever we tell you, we've looked at this, this is what a higher level of design is. And there are things like that. We've already noticed in the last couple of staff communications, you begin to see some more detail on certain things. And we're working on improving that.
So I think this is all good, and that is, we agree, we need to keep a ball moving and making sure that we've done all the conversations with the applicant, but make sure we're providing all of that detail so that the planning commissioner can. It's in 1095, plans that demonstrate such attention may qualify for certain variations as detailed in the section, provided that such variations can be as accomplished without impairing the intent of the land used held while providing substantial benefit to the city of Littleton. But it talks about, those are the standards, and that's how we've evaluated that statement is by these standards. So that's what I was getting at. And we're not going to say, this is nifty keen. We're going to say it meets that by outlining each one of these criteria. So that's how staff has analyzed that statement.
Thank you.
I can make one comment here. When I ask, are there any technical questions after staff presentation? I don't mean technical questions about arguing about roadway widths or parking widths. What I'm asking for is asking dry, specific questions about how, what the staff was doing, what they wrote, what their reasoning was. What I've seen in the past, and I've done this in the distant past, and I was wrong, it let editorial comment from commissioners creep in at that very early stage of the hearing where, and you're basically doing a summation, something best left till after a motion is made, and then we have our discussion before our vote. I'm trying to get the commissioners, by asking technical questions, to keep it open and keep our minds open, and so that, and then, after our summation, then we can get into the arguments and your personal opinions, based on finding of fact. So I'm trying to keep that from happening early in the process.
And that's very important. While the staff, the applicant is giving their presentations, and you're considering the record, that is a time to ask informational questions. But you, Mr. Chairman, you're on the head, that's not a time to either editorialize and say, "I'm taking positions." Where you'll get into that is after the motion and second has been made, and you're now discussing the basis for your action. In the initial collection of information at that hearing, yes, there should be the technical questions, there should be the types of questions that are designed to enlist a factual information for you to use.
Now, maybe when the applicant's making his presentation, maybe you can get a little more confrontational, a little more probing, but still, to keep an open mind, best left till the summation.
Absolutely. Keep an open mind until you get past the motion and second stage, and you're now discussing the basis for that motion, and what are you going to take that action?
And waiting for the public comment, too.
Yeah, and you've already had the public comment, you've had everything, but you're now at the point of discussing why the commission's going to act.
So that gives me another question, if this is okay. So when we're, you're doing up the discussion part, and then it sometimes seems like there's discussion, and then sometimes it seems like there's, well, people will just actually have the discussion and say how they're going to vote. So is that really two pieces where we have the discussion, and then we talk about why we might be voting the way we are, or are they kind of mingled together?
Well, I would kind of view them as more of a process. You're having the initial testimony from the staff, from the applicant, from the public, and you're asking questions and collecting information. But you don't have a formal motion that is discussing, that is on the floor as to how you're going to vote. Then, and so it's open to the public. Once you get to that motion stage, and there's a motion and a second on the floor, now it's just this body discussing the basis for its action. So you've kind of moved from the first phase, which is collecting all this information, into a decision-making phase of the body. So I'd sort of discuss, think of it as a two-phase process.
But I don't think it's, I was just going to say, I think the other thing that's totally valid is, say you're the first person to comment after the motion's on the table, you said, "I've heard this, 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 and I'm, you know, going to support the motion or not support the motion." If three other people make points that all of a sudden resonate, nothing says you can't vote different than what you decided.
Absolutely.
And that's where it comes down to, but human nature tends to, people don't want to change their vote. So that was where my concern was, is because I value what all the other commissioners, everyone's, because they bring up points that I haven't thought of, right? And if everyone started talking about how they're voting, and then suddenly someone brings up a point, like, wow, you know, I hadn't thought about that, I want to change it, human nature's a little funny about that stuff.
That's why it's so important that you use your own filter to process the information. I mean, that's why we have a varied commission, is that a number of opinions or filters come into this and talk about the decision-making process. I mean, if you say that you support something, you, you know, you've got a motion on there at that time, that's ephemeral, it's transient, it's not set in stone. So you may hear something that does change your mind. It's a better commissioner that's willing to listen to more information and change their mind than somebody who sticks by a vote because that's what they initially said. I mean, it's the same thing as making the motion, you don't have to, you want to get it out there for discussion. That's really what it's for.
So do we have to say how we're going to vote against?
No.
That's part of your question, too, is, okay.
But you could also say that you're going to vote against it and then change your mind. Just because you said that you're going to vote for it before you make that actual formal vote, you're not tied to any decision. You could literally change your mind at the exact moment that you have to press your button on your thing, you know? Even if you said vehemently for five minutes in discussion that you were totally against it, you know, and that's your total prerogative.
Of course, if you look back and see yes and you meant no, you're going to have to say something.
What's important during the discussion phase of the meeting is explaining the basis for your decision as a board. Because when it gets challenging for, whether you go back and look at, what was the basis of their decision, and was it reasonable? No reasonable person could have come up, you know, that had no basis, they just made an arbitrary decision, and the decision of the board is overturned.
If you all just sat there and said no, and refused to explain why you're saying no, that's a problem.
Or did somebody else outside of the code, he said, you know, we're going to say no because we hate the colors painted, you know, or something like that. There was no code provision on that.
A previous attorney gave us advice one time a few years back to find no, utter no finding of fact, just vote.
It's a bad, it's a bad word.
It was overturned.
It's strictly my word bias.
I would tell you, I don't think that's consistent with common law. As a quasi judicial body, I think you have to be able to demonstrate in the record that there was some basis for your decision. I think if you don't do that, every case becomes a risk in terms of being overturned because I think the whole idea of a quasi judicial body is that the reviewing body, in this case it would be the district court, would be able to look at your record and say, "We can look at the board commission's record, and we can determine how they got there." And now they may make their own judgments as to the law or whatever, but they're able to look at your record and determine what the basis for your decision-making was.
We had a couple of cases in the past where we had discussion, and it was definitely going one direction, and the vote was absolutely opposite. And I think that's where you say it's probably bad because you don't have that basis in the discussion. You might have it, hopefully you always have it in the motion, but the more basis you have, the stronger the case, I would think.
Well, it sounds like we might add on at this point where if it goes opposite, or at least if it's rejected after it was presumably going to be approved, that we'd have another motion and another discussion as to why.
And that's what we're, that's what we were just saying earlier, right? Are we adding that step?
Right. You have to have a decision.
Yeah, you need to have a decision.
There is no decision.
And the other side of it is, is that you may have a case where you say, there is a discussion, and the commission says, well, yes, 50 feet is too high, but 45 feet is okay. And, but then there's more discussion, and the commission goes, well, maybe 45 feet isn't okay. That's where it's important to get to the record and say, well, you know, after thinking about it, maybe it's still too high. What is really hard is when you get a decision, the commission says 50 is too high, 45 is okay. And then there's suddenly a vote, and the commission votes it down, and there's a vote to reject it because it's too high, a court's going, well, wait a second, you got this record? Yeah, they said 50's too high, but 45's okay, but then they entertain a motion to reject saying it's too high. And a judge is saying, they're going, what happened? And that's where you have to the argument, you may just, well, change your mind, and you may say, well, yeah, nah, I think about it, 45 really is too high, 35 would be much better, and here's all the reasons why I think consistent with the code, 35's much better.
So Steve, I think that's key, tying everything back to the code or the comp plan.
Those findings.
Yeah, those findings. You've got to have findings for anything, and all of your decision-making, it's not just personal opinion.
Well, you tie it to the record, the code, the comp plan, and the information before you in the record.
And you can question the staff report. You don't have to agree with everything the staff report says. If you don't interpret the code that way.
No, it's just part of the record, the staff report, you don't have to read how the public testimony is given. It's just part of the record that you considered with an open mind and good faith in making your decision.
Good discussion. Any other questions? We're running a little late, but I learned a lot.
Thank you again, and we'll be doing this again.
Thanks for coming.